Good evening and morning. Okay, nice to meet you, the Reverend Club, and then to the school war meetings. It's time to declare the evening. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening.
My name is Joanne Lazarus. I live at 170 Exeter Road. I'm here tonight to speak up about an ongoing issue that seems to be escalating. First, I'd like to state that I wear and have worn many different hats here in Newmarket and throughout my teaching career. I am currently the Teachers' Union President, and I have held this office for the last year and a half, though I was also Union President for an extended period of time a few superintendents ago. In my 29 years of teaching, I have taught in three states, five districts, seven schools, and every grade from kindergarten through eighth grade. A truly good admitted, some awful ones, and ones that were just punching a time card. As such, I feel that I am qualified to speak on how Newmarket's school system is working. However, I am speaking tonight as a member of the Newmarket community, not as a union representative. I am frustrated by the negative conversations that have been directed at Dr. Givens and then onto you, the school board, by people that have not participated or gotten involved in our work. I am angry that my work and individuals is being ignored. My time, my spring, my summer, my fall, has all been devoted to participating in various committees organized by Dr. Givens to open our schools and to keep everyone safe. Now, some members of our community have decided that Dr. Givens has made all of these decisions on her own, and that she has some private agenda we don't know about. Dr. Givens saw early on that this virus was not going to be some small thing that would just be here for a short while. Instead, proactively, she asked for our input, and she has continued to do so. Those 80 other people I mentioned, all volunteers, all working on different aspects of opening school, starting in June and continuing on into late August. Anyone that wanted to be on a committee was put on a committee, and their voices were heard. After each committee submitted their report to Dr. Givens, she brought them back to the steering committee to take a look inside what to keep or what to change. As a member of that steering committee, I can tell you that the most we changed was some simple wording. It was the work of these volunteers that enabled us to open our schools. The plan that you all received was the committee's plan, not Dr. Givens. And as an educator, I'd like to educate you on what my personal experience has been working with Dr. Givens. As stated previously, I have been Union President on and off for quite a few years and quite a few superintendents. Not a single superintendent prior to Dr. Givens had ever called me during their first week of work. Not a single superintendent has ever said, "I'd like to work with the Union as you are the elected representative of the teachers," until Dr. Givens. Instead, most of our previous superintendents thought our roles were supposed to be adversarial. Now, I keep saying previous superintendents. Let's name a few of them, shall we? Dr. Kathleen Murphy, Dr. Bob Lenahan, Dr. Elaine Holt, Michael Martin, Meredith Nato, Jim Hayes. There was also another gentleman who took the job but left after one week, and another woman who stayed for approximately six months. I can't remember her name for the life of me. That's eight people in just my 15 years here in Newmarket. People are not lining up to be superintendent here in Newmarket. We have a reputation, and it's not good. I can also speak to what's happening to families and teachers in other districts here in New Hampshire, as I meet monthly with Union Presidents across the coast region. Newmarket is the only district that has had teacher representatives involved since the very beginning of planning for remote instruction and reopening. Dr. Givens believes in trusting the people working with her. She believes that teachers are professionals, that our intent is to help, not hinder, that we can work together and even disagree, but the overarching goal is still children first. The idea of going remote after vacation periods was brought to our committee and soundly discussed from all sides before moving it forward to our community. I do not understand how people are so quick to jump on a hate bandwagon. The behaviors and comments I've seen and heard about Dr. Givens are simply appalling. If the children in our classrooms behave this way, they would be in the principal's office, and their parents would be getting called. Now, if you had asked me back in June of 2019 if I would ever stand up at a school war meeting and defend a superintendent, I would have laughed hysterically. I have gone toe-to-toe and round-for-round with almost every one of those previous eight superintendents on some issue or another, and I have certainly had disagreements with Dr. Givens, but in no way was it ever apropos monious. No other superintendent has gone out of their way to listen to all sides, to be willing to do what is right, and to trust their employees than Dr. Givens. I have been an educator for 29 years now, and I will stand and fight until the day I leave this planet. I have not sold out by my profession because I admire her. What I am simply stating is that I have seen has been an incredibly hard-working woman trying to get a school district on the correct path to provide the highest quality of education possible. So to paraphrase a familiar statement, we'll agree to disagree, but there is no reason to be disagreeable about it. Thank you. Okay, well, now I'm coming back up. And I'm putting on my Union President hat. So I am the president of the Newmarket Teachers Association, and I'm here tonight to ask the board to make more timely decisions. The impression that teachers are getting from the delay in deciding whether or not to change our school calendar and other decisions is that it appears there is little comprehension on how hard we are all working this year. Teaching has always been a hard job, but since last March, we are all working harder than ever. Speaking from my own experience as a kindergarten teacher, I need every single moment to stay on top of what I'm teaching and try to figure out how to deliver effective instruction without allowing children to touch things and to be socially distanced. The most simple and important lesson that kindergarteners are supposed to learn is how to share, and that's the one lesson I'm not able to teach this year. They visit but cannot share. I have to tell children to help their friends, which is so repugnant. All the lessons I've developed over the years have to be redesigned to allow for individual work. No carpet time, no texture table, no partner games, knowing all the while that at any moment we might go to remote instruction, so I must plan two sets of plans. I think about the teachers at the junior-senior building who twice now have had to go remote instruction with just a day's notice. Teachers not only have to switch between in-person and remote, but having to adjust to not having a planning period each day for grading and communication. Waiting till Friday is not easy for anyone, while knowing that professional development, staff meetings, and IP meetings need to occur during that time as well. You, the school board, have been given a detailed list in what is hopefully our final MOA of all the changes that have occurred to our CBA this school year. What that list doesn't encompass is the toll it takes on our psyche. When we hear on the nightly news how the COVID infection rate is growing, or see the lovely postings on social media that belittle our work, or learn that there are no substitutes if one of us gets ill, and then constantly thinking about how we reach that child whose home life precludes them from participating fully in remote instruction, it's overwhelming. I can honestly say that this year my brain never strays from worry about my students, both present and past. I know any decision you make is not going to be popular with at least half of our profession, but a decision must be made if only to keep our teachers' mental health safe and have the necessary time to plan. Thank you.
Anyone else? Who wrote in? Lisa Nicholson wrote in, and she asked that this be shared. It says, "Before your vote tonight on the revised calendar, I want to offer my input. I agree that it is better to be prepared for remote learning rather than an unanticipated shift. Given the new travel restrictions released yesterday and the additions to travel quarantine guidelines, I think we should plan for remote learning for two weeks after both Thanksgiving and Christmas vacations, or shift to remote from Thanksgiving through New Year. I do think, however, that we should wait to make the determination for remaining vacation periods. There are many unknowns at play right now, including whether or not headway will be made on a vaccine. I would respectfully ask that the board wait to make the remaining calendar changes. Also, I saw the letter of interest from the Wakefield SAU, and I firmly believe this is not something that Newmarket should even entertain. I would seem that we have enough on our plates managing our own district without trying to combine forces with a district so far away. Thank you for your combined hard work on behalf of our students and families. Respectfully, Lisa Nicholson." So we will move forward with the FY '22 budgets workshop, and I'm going to let you take that over. Yes, so on last Thursday, we had the principals in, and so they talked about the educational plan at the three buildings, two buildings, three schools. And tonight, we're going to continue presenting our educational plan by having Assistant Superintendent Black and our Director of Student Services, Erica MacNeil, here to share how this plan supports our educational programming. And then we have some operations folks here that will then talk about some of the operational components of the budget. So I will ask our Director of Student Services to step forward, if you'll come up to the mic, and share with the board the educational programming that is supported by this budget proposal.
Good evening. If you go to the district section of our binders, you'll see the narrative for the student services portion of the budget. We serve students ranging from ages three through 21, and currently we have 180 identified students. You can see the historical numbers. We've had some dips, and we're starting to make gains. This year, we're seeing a number of referrals, and some of that could be COVID-related for having a lot of concerns about where students' academics are, and so I think we'll continue to see some gains in our numbers overall. That population is 14.82%, which is slightly under the state average. Our state average runs between 15 and 15.4% on average. Our staffing, I'm looking to keep all of our staffing the same. We have 17 special education teachers, three of which I have through the IDEA funds, which is grant funds. That gives us an average of 10.15 students per student across the grade. That's really averaging them, but I do want to put kind of a little, I guess, note in there that when you have some, we have ranges. We have some people who have, you know, four or five students on their caseload, and some that could have up to 12, and some of that's based on the need of the student. So if we have students who are multiply disabled, there's a smaller case number for those case holders. So I have the, by grade as well. And then, we also keep our professional staffing levels the same. One of our case managers is shifting from the junior-senior high into the elementary school, but it's keeping our staffing the same, it's just shifting. We're actually experiencing higher caseloads at the elementary level than we were at the junior-senior high, and typically that would be reversed. So when we had a teacher leave and we had a vacant position we couldn't fill, we shifted it to the elementary school so that we were supporting especially that early intervention and bringing the case numbers down there. Some highlights: Our contracted services are down by about $57,000, and that's through changes and also student need, so we're looking to make a decrease there. At the same time, our transportation is going up by about $92,000, and that is due to, right now, I'm budgeting on what our current costs are, and our costs are being impacted by the various models throughout the region and even into Massachusetts where we have some students attending. What we typically do is we try to do a ride-share, which brings our rate down, so that if there's, say, two students going to this one school, and say, Exeter and our town had kids going there, they would pick up the kid here, go to Exeter, pick up the kid there, and then move on. That cost, that's not happening as much right now. There's been a lot of shifts regionally based on what's happening at those out-of-district schools, but also within each regional school, so our rates have gone up a bit, so I'm basing that on what we currently are being charged. Our charter school student services is down slightly by 8,300, and actually, that's a result of kids coming back to Newmarket, so we're able to cover their services by the staff we have here. When we have students at a charter school, we have to provide services for those students, but we have to either do it at the charter school, or we have to bus kids back into our district to provide services here. So what we've been able to do with these kids coming back is just provide the services with the staff we already have, being a little more efficient that way, which has brought that cost down slightly. The total student service budget is just under $7,000 up from last year, which is really great. Our added district placements, we also have eight students who are served at approved special education school. Those are students who are, we were not meeting their needs here, or we didn't have the resources in the buildings to support those students, so they are placed out of district. We have eight of those students currently, and we have five students who are currently being served at charter schools. Our district placements, you can kind of see over time, a little up, a little down, but we've basically been in the same number historically there. Before I move on to ESOL, any questions so far? I know I tend to move a little quickly.
Erica, I just had a question about the ride-share. Is that due to COVID and remote students, and so it may hopefully go down next year if we get lucky?
Yeah, the hope would be if everyone goes back to where they were placed previously and schools are back in session, that could go down.
We obviously have to plan on it.
Right, but right now, we're really budgeting based on what we know, and this year, we're taking a hit now because we didn't know last year that this would be the case. So I'm really basing that on our current rates.
Great, thank you.
And we do have a long-term contract with Stico's Learning Collaborative, which we're a member of, and we get really, really great rates from them. They work with us really well to try to find the best options for our kiddos, so.
That's great.
For our ESOL department, we have 24 students currently receiving services. We have eight different home languages. Last year, I think we had 13 different home languages, if I remember, and we have one teacher and one tutor. We also end up with having one to two newcomers, and what that is, is those are students who are coming directly from us with no background in speaking here. They might have had English instruction and, but if somebody could come directly from Brazil and come to us, and they're in our classrooms, and so these two people support those kiddos, it takes a lot of time to work with those students because they're being immersed into our community and our language, and there's a real steep learning curve for those kiddos. Then typically, over time, as they're acclimating to the language, they receive less and less services, but we have always had one to two newcomers each year, which is just a very interesting part about our community, is we constantly have a couple of brand-new people who are coming in without having been in this country even. So we're looking to keep that staffing levels the same as well, that puts them at like a one to 12 ratio, and I just want to also celebrate that our ESOL department has been doing a really great job. We've been able to discharge, and we were able to get all of our state testing in before COVID closure last year, so we had some graduating, a number of graduating kiddos last year, which is really exciting. Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Next?
Good. Okay. So next, our Assistant Superintendent, Deborah Black, is going to present the administration and other instructional services area of the budget, and there's not really huge significant changes, you know, so I asked her if she could just focus a lot of her comments on the instructional services, and not everything shows up as an expense here, so we get grants, and as we know that one of the roles and responsibilities of our Assistant Superintendent is to write those grants, so I thought it would be important for you to understand some of the work that's being done now, even if the money isn't supported by taxpayers. It's part of our educational plan, and we always say we go to the taxpayers as the course of last resort, not first resort. So I will turn the mic over to Assistant Superintendent Black.
Thank you, and I'm definitely smiling under here, I promise.
We are too.
It's a pleasure to be here. There are some primary drivers in the area of the budget that I'm speaking to, and some of those are technology-related, not in the way that Jason would speak to them, but this budget, it kind of encapsulates the assessment tools that we use that are digitally or online tools, and that includes things that you're probably familiar with, our NWEA, our map testing. We use Performance Plus and Performance Tracker, which is a platform for being able to analyze and disaggregate student data. Those are some of the drivers that fall within that aspect of the budget. One of the things that we are requesting at this time is the addition of a tool that's called AppleTrack. AppleTrack is a tool that allows us to handle everything related to the recruitment of staff, the entire process from the time that they apply, they upload all of their credentials and all of their information in there. What makes AppleTrack unique is that in our state, certainly, lots and lots of schools are using it, many, many schools. And once a teacher applies in AppleTrack, they can then just, it's just simply them selecting us as one of the schools that they're interested in applying to, and even if a teacher does not, in fact, or any type of a specialist does not apply, we can actually do recruitment. We can look for people who have not applied but in fact carry those licensures or certificates. So it really does make the entire process much, much easier. We find that it's not necessary to be chasing people down for their letters of reference, they're already in there. You can directly email and contact references through that system, and you can invite them to come in for interviews. them to come in for, for interviews. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty nifty tool. What we would be asking for would be $6,000 next year to start implementation, which is actually just the transition into the platform, getting us set up, and then, and then training our, our staff, mostly our principals, and district admin team would be using the tool. We also have put, put in a request for some furnishings in the event that you elect to add a tech integration specialist, which you have seen a job description for in the budget. That person, we would be bringing on board to help with really the utilization of technology in the classroom. Jason's done a great job without fitting us with the tools, and we've got the resources. But at the end of the day, we recognize that staff are not familiar in the use of these tools necessarily, implementing and integrating those into the classroom. So this person would go in, they would do some modeling with some of those things and tools for teachers. They would go in and work alongside teacher, team teaching, getting some of those things in place, and also, you know, assist in the difficult process sometimes of actually locating the correct tools. Jason subscribes to a service that, that, that allows us to, to, to recognize if there are tools that teachers want to use that are already approved, so that we can legally use them, and they, they meet all of our privacy agreements. But, but oftentimes, there are great resources out there that are, that could be used that we aren't real familiar with, and that would be a, a great thing for that. So if we did end up with that position, we would just need to outfit them in, in their classroom. And then finally, there's been a little decrease, not a lot, of about $1,400 because, as you know, we shifted the way that we were handing kind of our site-based leadership within the schools, and we transitioned from having what we call teacher leaders to curriculum, George, I'm sorry, to grade level and content level specialists or coordinators in the school, and they, they took on the role also of the mentor coordinators for their buildings. So there's been a slight decrease there. The other one large driver is that we anticipate having about five teachers that will, that will be retiring next year, so you do have a severance obligation to them, and that falls in that same, in that same budget category. And one of the things that Dr. Given said mentioned is that, just to make you aware, not included in this budget, we do have other funding sources. The, some of the primary sources that I work with is our Title 1A, and that covers, right now, we have three tutors whose positions are funded through that grant. It also provides, in a, in a normal year, we would be able to use some of those resources for after-school tutoring. It provides transportation. There's also a set aside for any of our students who may be coming to us that are homeless, that need additional resources. The state has been wonderful, and so has the government, to allow us to carry these funds over. Normally, we can expend these funds for two years, but ESSA, the Every Child, or Every Student Succeeds Act, because of COVID, they're allowing us to continue to use funds even when we can't, haven't been able to expend them fully. So that's, that's really helped us a lot. We do have some funding available that we didn't touch last year, that hopefully we'll be able to use some of that coming up this year. Maybe reallocating some of that to our middle and high school. We are a, a school, a district that is allowed to expend them, not just at the elementary, but K to 12. So we, we may look at doing that down the road. We also have Title 2A. In, in Title, Title 1A, we get about $185,000 a year. Title 2A, we get about $45,000 a year, and that funds a lot of professional development. Right now, we utilize that funding for our mentors, for our teacher induction. We use it this year, including doing Google training at the beginning of the school year. We purchased books for teachers around distance learning to support them in that regard. We're running focus sessions after school for teachers, for our new staff to support them. But, you know, and again, in an ordinary year, we would also deploy some of those funds conceivably to bring in an outside person to do. But that's, that's what we utilize that for, and that's, that's what the, what the fund is, is designed for. And then the last fund that offsets some of our costs is Title 4A, and Title 4A is, can fall around a variety of things. You can transfer it into the professional development grant, but you can also utilize it for safe schools, bullying prevention. You can bring in a consultant to work on a culture and climate activity. There are a variety of, of ways that we can use that as well. It's a fairly flexible grant. We get about $24,000 annually in that grant. So that basically covers the, the areas that I'm here to discuss, and happy to take any questions that you might have.
Hi Deb, this is Amy.
Hi Amy. Yes, Amy.
I'm looking on the page where it says you were presenting, and I don't really see an explanation of all those numbers you were mentioning, like the 6,000 for the software. Is it on page 23?
So these, yeah, these were on page, let's see, on page 20, 23 and 24. So in reference to the amount that we're looking at, it's falls, it was on page 23. If you go under operation, it's, there's an amount for $6,000. That was for, that was for AppleTrack?
Yeah.
And what?
And then is the professional development, is that the 7,000 for the, the teacher leaders?
Yes, that's correct. That's on the next page.
Okay, and I think that, I think that was it. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Amy.
Anyone else?
I'm all set.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a few other members of the team here. We have Jason Carey, we have Melissa Van Sickle, she's our accountant, and we have the Jesse, he's here representing the Browns area, in case you have any particular questions around that. I'm going to ask Melissa if she would come up and maybe do two things for us. My understanding is that she can review the revenue side. You're good with that tonight? So we're going to start with that, and so we'll move back, if you look at the very beginning of the revenue. Should we talk to the items that are on page, page 40, cross-section area of revenues? And we are so pleased to have Melissa join our team this year. She's been an awesome, awesome addition. She has lots of experience with the state department of revenue, I think, is the area. She, she did a lot of the experience, and so she knows the ins and outs of revenue. She's a McCafferty, and we're happy to have her here presenting the revenue section. And then she'll talk too about some of the business and operations that Janice, of course, on vacation this weekend. So I'll just turn the mic over to you and let, let you have a...
Hi, Melissa Van Sickle, accountant for the Newmarket School District. I used to work with the State Treasurer's Office, not the Department of Revenue, but so I saw the inflows as well as the outflows. The revenues, the anticipated revenues that we're expect, projecting for fiscal year '22, the tuition levels that we budgeted for $10,000 this year are going to be down due to COVID. We're anticipating it being down to $2,000 or even perhaps zero next year, also due to COVID and enrollment projections. The, the student special aid, education aid, special student services, I forget how they call it, that also is projected to be down from 155, down to 134, to 137. They're roughly 56% is what Department of Revenue is telling us. Overall, all the other revenues are expected to stay the same or, or climb just slightly. Our costs, health insurance is supposed to be going up 5%. Dental will remain flat. The retirement rates for teachers are going up for 3.2%, and the regular staff employees will be going up just under 3% at 2.9. Our insurance is also going up, except for the life and long-term disability. That's to align with contractual obligations with the collective bargaining agreements and whatnot. Those will be going down, as well as unemployment insurance. Do you have any questions so far on revenues? Okay. So the structure for the business expenditures and food service, we, we rolled up everything into business services, operations. The administrative salaries and benefits, those you can see, we're projecting pretty much to stay on task with the growth in the salaries as well as benefit lines, and then all of your operational costs, we're hoping to come down. Food service, there's, there's slight change there. That is because we're outsourcing some of it for the high school and, and inputting some of it, putting all of our staff over to the elementary for now for COVID, and see if we can get through that. The revenues will be down slightly because we're not selling the meal, the snacks and, and all that other stuff. Everything is through the USDA, the state and federal funds for the meals and the breakfast for the kids. So we'll be short on revenues on that piece. Any questions? There's some changes to facilities. We split the, the way the budget was developed this year. I don't know if you were made aware. We have buildings in repairs, and we also have contractual services and inspections and whatnot. So we divided those up. That's why you'll see a slight change there. And Dave has requested some, some spending for equipment that is needed this year, that we didn't anticipate for, for this year, and he can talk to those levels. Any other questions?
Actually, Melissa, I did have one question on business and finance, health and dental insurance. So that's a 50% increase we're looking at?
On health and dental? No, 5%.
Because we're looking at, here, it's adopted last year was 50,000 approximately. It's 70,000 this year, and it shows a change of 20,000.
Um, no, we calculated it out to 5%.
Yeah, so when we, when we budgeted last year, of course, you know, we had different staff who took different insurance plans. And so this reflects, the projection for this year reflects what we know people are taking. So if we had the outgoing person for Melissa's position who had an individual plan, and then Melissa who has a, you know, family plan, then we would be budgeting differently, not saying she has this or that, just as an example.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right. When you, yeah, when you're expecting a lot of staff turnover or retirement, you're better off to budget at the higher salary level, as well as a full, full health and dental coverage.
Makes sense.
Full family plan. That's just typical of budgeting.
So last year, we budgeted for the staff we had.
Yep, no, it makes sense.
Any other questions?
No.
None. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa.
And again, Janet had mentioned that when they, when they split those accounts, so this is throughout in every section, you'll remember, that everything was reported as repair and maintenance, and they added the account for professional services, contracted services this year. And so you see differences in, in those. And as she mentioned, if you add up all of them, there's just a very small increase in professional services and two accounts together. So it looks funny because she's recording them in a way that's consistent with the Hampshire accounting code system. But it looks funny when you're comparing year over year, because in the current year, we were recording it differently than we are looking for. So thank you for coming. So if there's any dates here tonight, if you'd like to ask any questions, I know we've talked a lot about different projects, the junior se, at the elementary school, mainly carpeting project and a few things. So I know, I wanted Dave to be here in case you had any technical questions, and then we'll turn it over to Jason. Does anybody have any questions about projects or?
Yeah, I guess, Dave, I, I might just wonder, have we looked at what's underneath the rugs in the elementary school classrooms? Is it possible to tear them up and just?
I remember, because it never, it came up when the flood happened, the kindergarten strike. We picked them up, and it was just cement.
We're actually in the process of getting pricing to replace, like, sorry. They increased the facility management since July 2nd. We're in the process of getting pricing to rip up and put tile in place of the rugs at the elementary school, probably in two different phases. I haven't received the pricing yet, but we should have that fairly soon. It, it is in bad shape, and if the rooms are like two-thirds carpet, one-third tile, then we're just going to have a field cut.
One thing that came up last week was when Chon was presenting, you know, without taking away from any educational programming, would it be feasible for us to do all 12 this year as opposed to six and six? It may not make any sense, but that is just something that we talked about last week.
I mean, depending when the, it might be doable. I don't have the pricing yet, so I can't say. But it would make more sense than twice, and we, we would do it in a way not to disrupt the students, whether it be on a school vacation or, you know, it wouldn't disrupt the academics or the kids or anything.
And then whether we have a fund to support that, the repair and maintenance fund, yeah. Yeah.
But the question was, Dave, have you looked underneath the carpet? Do you know what's underneath the carpet? Is it, is there tile underneath it, or is it a cement slab or?
As far as I know, it's a cement slab. It's underneath, and it's like glued down. So it's, it's ripping it up.
So you still have adhesive, so we definitely don't want to just have that as a...
Right, yeah.
I think it's a temporary solution. If the concrete was in good enough shape, but we don't want adhesive and...
Yeah, the idea was to...
Do something over one of the breaks, just to get it out of there?
Just to get the disgusting carpet out.
Yeah. Well, Chon said, and I, I know that I've been in those classrooms, and there's some that are like really bad, you know, and then there's others that are bad.
We don't, we don't want kids sitting on adhesive and residue.
And so the idea was that this year, we would do the really bad ones, and next year, do the ones that looked and have been replaced at some point in this century.
And it would be with a product that doesn't absorb food and spills. You know, there's new products that didn't exist before, so we would put down a product like that.
Any other questions for, thank you very much?
Thank you.
Jason Carey, our Director of Information Technology.
Thank you.
Will you wrap us up tonight and tell all about those projects that you have?
Short and sweet. So, technology budget for FY '22, overall, we had a 39% increase, which is pretty high at first. But 89% of that is related to salaries and benefits. So to the education technology specialist position that Deb referred to earlier, as well as increasing our summer help through the month of September, which is something we were fortunate enough to do this year, is keep our summer help on until October. Dr. Given supported that, and it, it kept us afloat the past few months. So that was huge. So overall, again, that, that increase is about $150,000. Take away the salaries and benefits, and we're looking at under $20,000. So one other change too, to the actual structure of this budget, was where the salaries actually went. So there's a new line this year, salaries administrator, the director position, and then salaries other, non-instructional, includes all my guys plus the educational technology specialist. So a few changes there. I mentioned the increase, part of that 39%, a, a big piece of that is some additional pieces of software that were introduced next year, as well as a projector and screen for the junior senior high school cafeteria. So something similar to this, that's a real large space, it will be scaled up. Makes the room more usable for town meetings, school events. So something will, that will definitely get a lot of use out of. Going through building by building here, this, the SEU office will have new wireless installed next year, as well as new network switching. We just did the junior high school, junior senior high school last year and the elementary school this year. So new switching over there, we'll do the, this building next year. New administrative phones, all our VoIP handsets that we use throughout the building, it's probably 50 or so, will all get updated. They're, they're a little long in the tooth, ready for an upgrade. They're, they're a little long in the tooth, ready for an upgrade. As far as the, the applications I mentioned, we, we're looking at really one of the biggest expenses next year is replacing our backup solution, which we have right now. In, in addition to that will be a disaster recovery solution. So right now, if someone loses files or we, we lose a hard drive, we can restore that data. With this new solution, we could have a server corrupt, die and be able to spin that back up and, and get going again within, probably, probably take an hour, whereas right now we're rebuilding the server from scratch. So it's gonna improve disaster recovery and business continuity. A few other, other pieces of software are mobile device manager, application and inventory database, and automated user account creation tool, which will take a burden off of our data and systems specialist who, who currently creates, manually creates user accounts. So we'll be able to automate that process and have him do, make better use of his time. At the elementary school, we'll continue to support our one-to-one student Chromebook initiative, providing our fifth graders with Chromebooks. The elementary school will also get new wireless, whereas right now we, we have an access point in every other room. Since COVID, all those students have devices now, so the, the demand on our network and, and the signal strength is inadequate. We're gonna implement a temporary solution to get us through the rest of the year. But next year, it's a new model where we have an access point in every room, better coverage, better signal. We'll also replace some LCD projectors at the elementary school and a server. We have one server over there that is a host on virtual machines. That will be upgraded as well. At the junior, senior high school, we're also replacing some Chromebooks for our ninth graders. That's also part of our one-to-one Chromebook initiative. Desktop computer lab is up for replacement, again, the cafeterium projector and screen. And the final part of the data backup and disaster recovery solution will be some large storage. So another server or two will store all that data. We'll also replicate everything offsite too. Any questions for me?
So that's just gonna be a NAS storage or take it?
Yes, I'm, I'm starting to investigate all the, all the solutions now, but it sounds like the cloud, the cloud piece could get expensive.
Not that it's particularly applicable, but is it regionally isolated, your data recovery?
What was that?
Is the data recovery regionally isolated? Not that it's particularly needed in this field, but?
Uh, depends, um, it all depends on the solution, right? So, but something to, to look into absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, if something happened to our area, it wouldn't really matter. I suppose we had the data.
Most of the services would have redundant sites, east coast, west coast, just like we use for E911 here.
Sure.
Two data centers, so.
Great, thanks.
Those ninth grade Chromebooks, are those the original Chromebooks that those kids got four years ago? Or is that what we're replacing or the incoming?
So, so Chromebooks, students in fifth grade and ninth grade get a new device every year and they'll carry them with them. Ninth graders take them till they graduate, they take them home, and then the fifth graders will hang on to them till they start ninth grade.
That's, so the ones that are getting, okay, so new incoming freshmen will be getting a new Chromebook?
Yes, in fifth grade.
Okay.
And that happened this year too?
Yes.
Yeah, we've been, yeah, the last few years we've been able to do that.
So I'm just trying to see, like, I'm, I'm assuming the incoming freshmen were probably the original fourth, fourth grade, third grade class that had Chromebooks. So will they leave those Chromebooks at the elementary school? It doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
What happens, so what happens is that you went one-to-one from grade five through 12.
Yes.
And the district provides every fifth grader with a device that they keep until the end of the eighth grade year in their lifetime of life. So they get a new one when they start their freshman year, you get them through the high school.
Thank you.
That's, yeah.
So that, yeah, they keep that device. Ideally without COVID, we would have had them deployed a lot sooner. But that definitely changed how we did things. But yeah, they, they get that device in fifth grade, they keep it for six, seven, eight. When they come into ninth, we, we refresh it. Ideally, maybe next summer, we'd be able to have our ninth graders come in, in August or July and pick up their new device instead of the first week of school, so.
What are our one-to-one plans for 21, 22 years as far as K through four reverting back to the?
I wouldn't go one-to-one in lower elementary for sure.
Yeah.
I think having devices available, you know, for learning experiences at the lower elementary makes sense. I think in the fifth grade it makes sense because you're trying to prepare them for, for middle school. And oftentimes you think of middle school anyways as being, you know, five, six, seven and eight, right? I mean, that's, that's typical. So I think that it makes total sense to have one-to-one there unless.
So with those kids, K through four, we're having now, would those just become Chromecart devices and shared?
Part of this budget includes additional carts.
As we get to the other end, yeah.
Yeah.
But hey, we just picked up all these devices. We chose not to use carts, obviously, because of COVID and the devices going home. So part of this budget includes, I think, an additional close to 10 carts, so.
Wow, that'd be great.
Yeah, we picked up a lot of, a lot of devices.
Yes. And so we're on a cycle. So a lot of the things that are here are, are new, right? In one sense, because we, we didn't do them last year. Last year we did different projects because there's a replacement cycle for all of it. So we did a core switch at the elementary school. We're not doing a core switch again. You know, that has a life of what, eight years maybe?
Yeah, it'll probably be another eight, eight years before you have to.
Yeah, and so, but there's different things that are in the cycle to be done. So, so there's a, there's a portion of our budget that's, that's baked into the base of our tax rate. And so these items might shift from where the money's being spent, but overall, we're trying to keep, you know, some consistent amount of money in there to support, you know, our platform and, and the devices that students and staff are using. So we try to, you know, you, you become reliant on these. You've got to be able to support, you know, the work that everybody's doing by keeping these in. So I think Jason's done an awesome job in this area. So, thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that walks you through the plan and the money that goes to support the plan. And so at this point, you know, we would like to know if there's any questions you have about the plan, if there's any additional work that we need to do in order to help you process this. And, you know, of course, ultimately it's our hope that you would support it, but if, if you find, you know, you're, you're, you're not feeling that would be in your, you know, where you'd like to be right now, then we, we need to know that because if we have to make any adjustments, we're gonna need a little bit of time. So I would just like to hear from you, what you would like for next steps.
Susan, I just would like to sort of begin by thanking you and the administrative team and the staff throughout for getting this budget to us and having a student-focused primary priority for every decision that's made. So thank you to everyone in the room, the principals who were here last week, everybody. Because I, it, and for me, and I can only speak for myself, I can see the rationale and the thought behind the decisions that are being made. When, when that happens, it helps us all and allows me to support it. So I'm, I'm all set. My only question is, can we do more carpet removal? But that's a minor, that's a minor thing because I, I can definitely see the student focus and the thought that was put into every decision. And that is why we're all here. So that's just my thoughts on it. So thank you, everyone.
I will say after being doing this for a while, that this is a much easier read than going through columns. And, you know, I'm, it's just an easier way to understand it and understand where the money's going. Amy, do you have your hand raised?
Amy, you trying to speak?
Are you trying to speak?
We can't hear you. Are you muted?
You're muted.
You're muted or I cooked out the speaker wire.
Amy, Amy, can you check to see if you're mute, muted? Cause we can't hear you. You're not muted.
She's not. No, she's definitely not muted. So.
Jen?
Oh, yeah, she's not muted.
Try it now, Amy.
No.
She's not, yeah. We're working on it, Amy.
Sorry, Amy.
And Mike just said he can't get into the call.
Okay.
Okay.
Try to please Amy. Try it again.
I just wanna make a note, people at home cannot hear Susan and Liz very well.
Elizabeth, can you hear me now?
You keep going in and out, Susan and Liz, I can't hear you very well.
Okay, maybe we can change out a microphone. I'll try to talk louder.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. Can you hear her?
No.
Here. I'm loud enough.
We could just share them. No, we can't share.
Does this work? Can you hear the phone, Amy?
I can hear you.
Oh, yeah.
I can hear Gary, yes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay.
Oh, wow, I'll live. I'm living on the edge.
Okay, Gary, anybody, what we will do if, if it?
I did have one question on transportation.
Sure.
The 10% increase, I assume that excludes special education transportation cost?
Yeah, so Erica's projection was based on rates that she's aware of with a slight increase, my understanding, to, to the rate, and then based on ridership. The 10% is for regular and athletics and such because our contract expires.
Yeah.
And, and usually you do a multi-year contract and any time I've ever bid that previously, that first year is a bump that's higher than what a normal cost of living is. Because what happens is the bus company has to go out and invest in new buses because you wanna have new equipment and it's for the life of your contract. So typically you get a bump that first year as a market adjustment. And then after that, it's usually more along the lines of like cost of living types of increases, so.
I was just surprised because I think we had given a lot of goodwill to the bus company this year or last year.
We haven't bid it yet. So that was just when Gina and I spoke about it. That's what our placeholder is, yeah.
And it's really only one bus. There's technically two bus companies. So Seacoast Collaborative and First Bus, correct?
For student.
Student, student first, that's it. Yes, for student.
Those are the providers in the area?
Yes. So then I. Oh, that's that.
Now you may wanna mute yourself now, Amy.
Um, so that's, we're really stuck. We've been stuck before. There was one year, and I can't remember the number. It was extremely high. We actually had the bus company here in our meeting to justify everything that we were doing. It was extremely high. 10% is probably just like what you said, a normal bump.
Yeah, that's not from them. That is just a projection.
Just a placeholder, sure.
Yeah, that's just a placeholder. And I will, I do have to say that the bus company, even though that is true, that it's kind of a monopoly scenario, they have been really, really good to work with. I mean, but we, they have been very flexible, you know, we added buses without adding costs for this first several, because they used the bus drivers that they were paying for for other school districts. Now, as other school districts have, you know, decided to go back, we lost a bus and they've been working with us to change the routes. So as you know, anybody that takes a bus knows that we had to change our routes on Monday. It's because we lost a bus. But they've really worked hard to find ways to be able to give us the maximum services for, you know, a minimum price. So I, I, I do, I mean, I've worked with a lot of bus companies and, and this one's particularly good.
Oh, that's nice to know.
I would say they've been very, very cooperative. They were on, you know, they were on actually the operations committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
We met with them every time we've had a challenge. They've come right in and they've worked with us. We, we looked and we saw at the elementary school that we only had three kids coming in. They were able to make some shifts around so that we could improve things at the high school level without having any conflict. Really good, I have, I have to say. They've been really good.
That's, that's nice.
So I don't think that they would take advantage of the situation based on my experience with them so far. They've been great.
Perfect. Good questions.
So what we'll do is, there's some additional information that's apparently provided to the budget committee. And Jan is on vacation this week and that, some of those detailed pieces that they like, as you were saying, some columns and such that add up to different, you know, different ways of presenting it. We will provide you with that next week with the default budget. And then we'll put on the agenda, you know, the adoption or the approval of the proposed budget. And then from there, it would then go to the budget committee after that. They do have a copy of the proposed budget if, you know, and then we can, you know, we'll, we'll let them know whenever your adopted or approved budget is, once, once we have that information. But so you can, so we'll get you that, so you'll have that next week. Okay?
And, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Have a lovely evening. Run for your life.
I was gonna say, you can always hang with us.
You can stay if you want, but.
So I was gonna table the goals because Amy's not here. I was just gonna table the board goals. We can deal with that next time.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
You okay with that, Amy?
Yes.
All right, so let's go the, the topic of the week, the calendar revision discussion. I don't know who would like to start it off, since I'm acting as chair. I'm not going to.
I did have one question. This is kind of a unique situation, I realize. So right now we're at 180 days. There's two days we didn't have school that we know of. Those normally be included or excluded, I guess?
This will, with this plan, it provides 180 days of instruction for, for our junior, senior high school students. And I think it's, will wind up being maybe two for the elementary. Based on our calendar. By eliminating, like, by, by eliminating the all-day PD days
Yep.
that were previously baked into the calendar for the rest of the year. So we have three of those whole days. Those will now be days of instruction. So that's how we meet that.
And then there was one other thing. I was having to catch the governor's press conference today. Travel guidelines and, use the term loosely, guidelines, suggestions if people don't travel. And apparently they're recommend, or now allowing that if you travel outside of New England, you can either quarantine for two weeks or quarantine for seven days and get a COVID test. So that might change some of our thoughts a little bit on this.
I actually watched that press conference today and my thought about that, cause and I did think about that in terms of this plan, and my thought was, you know, yes, it can sort of change things, but no, it really doesn't. Because if the decision is made for everyone to go remote, then that's the decision and that's the process. And it's not, you know, the Shelton family's doing one thing, coming back on a weird day, and I think it just gets too complicated. My, my thought about this calendar and I've, you know, we've received emails from people, we've, there's been a lot bandied about about it. I think from my perspective, with the, the amendments that Susan made last week in terms of just taking it through February vacation as opposed to the rest of the year, giving us concrete data-driven presentation last week about it and before. And the fact that she said, and I might be misquoting, but I don't think I am, there's a 95 to 100% chance that we're gonna have to close on the Monday after these vacations anyway. My simple mind says, allowing people to prepare, and yes, this is a challenge for families. But if we, if we make a decision now that says this is what the plan is, they have two weeks to plan as opposed to zero time to plan. So my thought is that, you know, this, this proposal as it is should be accepted, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I personally would prefer to try November, see what happens, not go remote. I understand, I understand the rationale and I understand that teachers are working their butts off. But I'm really so concerned about the educational part because we know as good of a job as teachers are doing remote, we know that in classroom education is a better overall educational experience. And we've already had six weeks, I think, if I'm not, two, three, three times we've gone, I don't remember.
Twice.
That was twice? So we've already had four weeks and this will be another six weeks. That was twice? So we've already had four weeks and this will be another six weeks. I would really just like to try it, see how it goes in November and then make a decision from there.
Maybe do what I can say?
Um, I have to agree with Gary. I, I, at first I, I thought about maybe November doing it, given and see how the rest of the vacations go, but I don't know, I just feel the same way. I feel in person it's so much more, um, you know, it works better for most kids, I think. Um, and I think we just have to plan as a, you know, as each vacation comes. I mean, if we see an uptick, uptick in cases, say before Christmas, you know, we'll have a, a better understanding, better, we could make a decision ahead of time. Um, I don't know, I just have, I have really mixed emotions about the whole thing because I know some parents want to stay home, some don't. I, I don't know.
So there's 14 active cases right now, you're right, correct?
Yes.
As of today?
I don't know of today, but it was on Tuesday.
That's what I saw today.
And there are 300 new cases today in one day.
In New Hampshire.
In New Hampshire.
Right, but they have increased testing too, so that's a big part of that as well, you know. I mean, that's...
So explain the rationale, because I, that's one part I don't understand. When we say we've increased testing, well, we've increased testing because people are getting sick and going in to get tested.
Well, not just because they get sick. Some people just want to know, I mean...
And then they're positive, so they just, if they're positive, then they're quarantining and they're not spreading it, whereas if they, they'd be spreading COVID. And maybe I'm wrong.
No, and I think, uh, one of the things that the governor talked about this afternoon was, um, comparing our increases to other states to see where it is and not just saying the increase of 300 cases is solely because of increased testing. It's a real number. Um, and I think the state's, um, director of health, human services or the medical director, I don't remember which one, said, Dr. Chan said that, that, that the numbers are, are , um, valid. My question is, and, you know, this is, Elizabeth, you can tell me this, you know, let's just say magically that we approve this tonight and by January, COVID is over and we are resumed normal. Do I think that's what's gonna happen? No, but ideally I can dream. At which, at which point we could then say, there is no need for a February remote. We can amend the calendar again and have people in class. Um, so I think that i- i- if we, again, do I think that's what's gonna happen? No, but it's not like, I don't think there's anyone from the teachers to the families to myself who does not believe that having a student in class is the best option, if there, it can be done safely and effectively. What we've heard from Susan, from other people, is that that cannot be after these vacations for very succinct reasons. Some of it travel, some of it staffing issues. Um, again, my mindset is it is more logical to plan.
But I would hate for us to say, all right, we're gonna go...
Not go remote. And then we come to that next week where everybody goes back and we don't have staff or we have a group of kids that are sick or we have a teacher that is sick. We have a family that's hospitalized.
And those, uh, there's just so many different scenarios that we could avoid by making this decision. Is this a great decision? No. We're asking our teachers to go remote, bring all their stuff home, asking families to get their kids' desk. I under, I understand the stress with that, but I also understand the need to keep our staff and our community safe. And I think the only way we can do that is by going remote.
You know, and I think this, this goes back to the whole concept of, and it's been said several times tonight in different circumstances, this is a unique year. There has never been a time in my two terms on this board that we have ever been in November looking at a calendar to make any changes to it, um, in uncharted water. Um, and I think we have to be flexible as, as a fraction of what we're asking our staff and the students to be in these, in these circumstances.
Well, I get it. The community, you know, they, the survey indicated that 56% wanted remote, 44 didn't. You know, I understand that's how you feel about it, but there are other, other people that don't, that feel the complete opposite. So I'm trying to please everybody here, but at the same time I have to go with how I feel.
Right.
And, and my, my daughter does better in person and that's how she learns. I don't think she really learns as much at home. So I, I look at it through my, my mother lens as well, but I get it. I want everyone safe too. I don't want people to get sick. But I think we've done a really great job up till now. I mean, um, for what we've accomplished, I don't, it's a, it's a hard decision, but I mean, I, I would be willing to make maybe amend it so that, I mean, I'm willing to compromise to, maybe we could do it for November and December and then pull, pull on February for now.
I guess, I guess my thought is if, if we have a 30% chance of getting these kids in the classroom, we should try it. Now, I understand you say 95 to 100%, but that's really based on last year's flu numbers and last year's data, so.
Without COVID and with the bigger, um, number of staff that, um, were available for subbing.
Sure. And this year, if you look at the flu numbers, both in the summer hemisphere and the CDC numbers from up till last week, we're way down on flu cases.
And there's way fewer students in that population because the majority of people across the country are in remote environments, not on campus. We are on campus. So you have to understand the whole kind of enchilada. Um, please understand that there isn't a person here that is saying that they would prefer remote over on campus. We brought this plan forward, we said that when flu season came, there was a probability that operationally it would become so untenueous that we would need to go remote and perhaps for the remainder of the year. So we find ourselves here. We have some experience behind us about the impacts it has on teaching and learning, on our faculty and staff, um, that we weren't aware of at the time because we've not been through this before. This is not of what's better for kids, right? What's better is that people know how to plan for what the likely, um, situation is going to be. And based on what we do know, the likely situation is that we are going to need to go remote after the holiday. Not because I want to, not because I think it's fabulous, not because Joanne or the teachers think that's great, but when you look at the data and the information that we have, the likelihood, the likelihood that we'll have to cancel school on Monday is pretty high. I almost had to cancel it again this week because I do not have substitutes to cover people that get sick. I don't have them. And we have even fewer substitutes now because people are, substitutes are getting sick. So just based on what we know, you know, the idea that we can say to teachers, look, we, we are gonna go remote afterwards helps significantly improve the educational experience they can provide to kids. It provides some structure and stability in an otherwise unstructured, unstable environment. Hugely important to the social and emotional well-being of kids, families, and staff members. What I'm saying to you is the likelihood, if you don't do this, that you're gonna get a call on Monday night after Thanksgiving.
At eight o'clock?
Is pretty high because those calls come in and they add up and I know how many I have and then I have to pull the trigger. The likelihood that Monday night after Sunday night that I'm gonna have to pick up the phone and cancel school on Tuesdays, pretty high, highly likely, highly likely that I'm going to have to do that. I'm willing to do that. I don't think that's educationally sound. I don't think it's, uh, for kids, I don't think it's, um, good for teachers to have to hear the night before, you know, that they're gonna have to go remote one day at a time, one day at a time, one day at a time. I mean, maybe it would be I'd have to call for two weeks. I have no idea that I could do that in advance. That would be based on a lot of different factors. So the, the plan here, and it's not something that we invented, there, people are supporting this all, all around us for the same reasons. You can't, you can't create people that aren't there. We've been running ads again. We put the ads back up again. We've been running them consistently. Not one application for a sub, not one application for a monitor, not one application for one position that I have advertised right now. None. And that's not going to change.
A pair of school, a, a job fair.
Right.
Nothing.
And, and so, and the question on the survey wasn't, do you want to be on campus or not?
Yeah.
That wasn't the question at all. The question is, do you want advanced notice and planning or do you want to receive a phone call on an emergency basis only, which is really, really likely gonna happen since we already know that it's happening now? So I, that's, that's really, to me, it doesn't matter. I'm, I can make those phone calls. It doesn't personally affect me one way or another. It affects my teachers. It affects, it, it affects the children. It will raise anxiety, um, for everybody, which is not good for learning. So, and I would...
Can't hear you.
People are mad that this decision's being made by this board.
By our administration, when really you should be looking at the leadership of the state. We had a conference today where there was an increase of 300 cases. UNH has been told to shelter in place, but yet nothing's been done for our schools. It's district by district. We as a community have to make this decision. We as a community have to support each other and our staff. So that lea, that leaves us as a board to make that decision.
Frustrating, I agree. And, and I know some boards have decided to come back. I know, I think Deerfield and Barrington decided to go back to school after holidays. Um, I'm not sure about other districts, but we do, so if the governor gives us an option to do the one week, can we not require people to do a one-week program, require people to get a COVID test before coming back? Is that not an option?
That's, that's taking into account one factor. That, that's saying that the problem we're trying to solve here is a quarantine problem. And I'm saying that that's not the problem. The problem isn't about quarantining after the holidays. The quarantining piece is to keep any viruses, sicknesses, whatever, shifting around like they do historically. The bigger problem is we don't have staff. I, I can't, I can't create staff.
Is that because of people who are, uh, quarantining because of COVID?
No, because people get colds and sniffles and, you know, they get sick. They get sick. There isn't any cases of COVID.
All my absences right now are just regular routine colds, you know, and flu.
So a two-week quarantine really isn't gonna help?
It's gonna slow that down. It gives us a, a much higher likelihood that we are going to be able to stay open after those periods. You look at, when you look at the data, you can see that it ramps up and then it kind of takes a little bit of a turn. So if we can flatten that, if we can stop the perpetuation of the spreading of germs and virus, any of them, not even COVID, if we can slow that down for those two weeks, the likelihood that we can stay open for five weeks increases dramatically as opposed to, so it's, it's the insurance piece. It's, it's, it's a way that we can try to stay open all year.
I guess...
Stay open longer.
I guess my thought is, if we're already having that issue, I'm not sure how quarantine's gonna help with that either way, to make it worse or better, because people are already...
Because staff will be healthier. The idea is that staff will be healthier because they will be staying within their bubble and it won't be going, and you know, I mean, you have kids, you, you know how, how viruses and colds work. They go through everybody in your family and then they go through the other people's families and then they come back to you. That we can, if we can contain it, then hopefully for staff members and other people, one, if they're not going out, they're not gonna be exposed as much.
But people aren't gonna change. So people, let's assume that people have the habits they have today, right, or during a remote period. They'd have the same habits during that additional remote period. So if they're already getting cold and flu, I don't think it's from in the building. It's likely from somewhere else. I'm not sure this is per se...
There's a flu right now in the elementary school. High fever, sniffles, that's going around.
We have higher absenteeism for students right now
Yeah.
than we normally would, as Sean explained last week. It, you know, again, it's not...
I guess maybe in the interest of...
There's not, there's not one factor. I think i- it's like, we'll try to address, and last week we talked about, let's try to address the, the substitute problem. Let's try to address the travel quarantine problem. Let's try to address the issue of flu. And it's not, it's the confluence of those together that creates the challenge. It's not one...
I understand that, and I, I think...
Yeah, it's the other. It's, 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 it's all in combination, so.
I think what I was gonna say is, or I know what I was gonna say, is in the interest of compromise, maybe we, since we do have so long before February vacation, maybe we can agree to try for two, these first two.
I'm totally down for that. I, I think we do Thanksgiving and Christmas for right now and see how that goes. And, I mean, here's the thing, we could be in a total lockdown. So I don't want to waste breath on February. I don't want to insult anybody.
And I, I will just say that if I have the, if I, if I know, then I can plan accordingly. I think structure and knowing is better. We know that the flu season peaks in February, you know, it's worse in February.
But at least we'll get to closer to February, January, see if the flu is really ramping up, see what the effect of this is.
How about this?
And maybe we'll find out.
We vote on all three. Okay, we vote on all three, but we can watch this. Again, this might not, this, we might be spinning our wheels for a non-issue. I mean, this is what we've been saying since March. We, so if we vote on all three, we can change our minds.
Well, that's why I'm saying why don't we just vote on two and then we can...
Because it helps with planning and it gives security for our staff. It lets our community know what's gonna happen and, but they are also gonna say, hey, if we do this, if we stay within our bubble, we do what we're supposed to do, social distance, masks, we might be able to do February and come right back to school. This is, this is gonna be up to us.
It's easier to, to, for pa, I was a single parent, so I, I, my heart goes out to those single parents that are out there. Um, if I knew, it's easier for me to make arrangements as far in advance as I can and then have to cancel it than to, to be scrambling to try to do something. So I think planning and structure...
There's also people saying they're gonna, they can't afford to, to do this, which...
But again, and this is not the board, like, this is a, the, I'm gonna say the words, send the emails. Not a board issue, not an issue. This is not us. So people can get angry at us. It's not us. We have to do what's right for the teachers and the community, the children.
I, I could support doing...
And if your superintendent's saying, this is the best thing for our community, we have to listen to that.
I think it's too early to make a decision on March, February, and I could support first two holidays and then regroup in beginning of January.
Or do we vote all three and we regroup in January and say, hey, Susan, how does it look? And then, and maybe by then our community's gonna, will be able to come to us and say, that was a good idea, that was a bad idea, and then we can make yet another decision. Or we might be spinning our wheels for nothing.
Yeah, but we're gonna have a lot more information before February. We're gonna see how bad the flu is, how, if COVID is definitely gonna get worse than it, you know, it is right now. So we'll have a lot more data and information come February.
Right, and we can change our minds, Amy. We turn around and on a dime.
I, I know, but I'm, I'm willing to compromise. I think Gary's willing, willing to...
But I'm not willing to do all three at this point. I understand your point.
So just take the vote. If it's a deadlock, then we just stay where we're at, I guess. And vote again next week when Mike's here.
Or we can compromise and get down the road three months and get us...
Are we allowed to ask the union to speak to this or is this something only the board can discuss at this point?
I mean, if you have a specific question, Joanne's, do you have a question for her? I mean, I don't...
Well, I guess for me, Joanne, what would work best for your union, knowing or spinning on a dime?
Can't hear her.
She can't get up. Her knee's up. Her knee's shot. Oh, wait, it's coming.
She's saying that it's, it's better for her to know.
It's good exercise for her.
It's definitely the knowing. It's definitely, in, in, it's, it's just so frustrating right now.
I get that.
And it's, it's, I, we've got teachers that, if you look at Infinite Campus, and you, and the admin can look at, they're posting grades at 1:00 AM, okay? They're work, I mean, I'm at school every day until 5:00, when the custodian's like, gotta spray. And I'm like, okay. It's just, so to be able to plan and to figure out what it's gonna look like, and even if then we just change it, that's okay. But the, but the seat-of-the-pants stuff is just what throws us over the edge. And we have some really high burnout-
Yeah.
-that's coming to a peak. Yeah, I mean, these, these sick days are gonna get used because just for mental wellness.
And it's, and I'll talk, it's the anxiety. It's the anxiety of not knowing.
Well, it's, it's also, it's like those of us that live in town, and you drive around, and you're heading somewhere, and you see a block party happening, and people aren't wearing masks. And you're like, wait, that's a kid that's in my classroom. And now I'm gonna have to come in and, okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's all bad. It's what we're all dealing with, but we're teachers. We like to plan. We have lesson plan books. I have mine set up for the year. But it's constantly changing, so.
Yeah, and that's something you touched on because of social media. Teachers can see what's happening. They can see the parties. They could see the Halloween. I am so grateful that we haven't seen anything from Halloween. And that tells me our community took care of each other, that we did the right things. But it, you, you do, you just live and worry about the kids in our community and the families.
To, to know that when we, if we're planning to stay home, I could be so much more prepared planning for a two-week remote session than, than instead of thinking, oh, Monday I get to be with my kids again, but then getting a phone call Sunday, that I-
Can I, can I speak for a minute? I think we should, I would like to, we need to decide, I mean, being area willing to compromise, and I think we should, I mean, February's off, what, February, January, couple months off, right? If things are worse, like I said, we can change it, and we could give you two weeks' notice. I, I think it's, it's better than doing nothing, you know? People want-
It'd be seven weeks if we-
I don't know.
If we came back the first week of January and discussed it, that'd be seven weeks' notice, which is a lot more than we're giving now. And if, and if we're trying to compromise, to be honest with you, I was really against this, because if we have any chance of getting the kids in the classroom, I really wanna try to do it. I think it's gonna end up being closed either way, because I think that's how it's gonna be decided. But I, I'm trying to compromise, and what I hear is, well, we'll wait for Mike, so we get the vote we want, or why not just do what we want and then decide it again in January?
I don't think anybody's saying to wait for Mike. If you have two people that feel one way, and another two others that feel another-
He just said that, though.
And then we'll just discuss it again?
I don't know how Mike is feeling about that. I'm saying-
You literally just said that.
I didn't-
Yeah, but she doesn't know how Mike's gonna vote.
I said, wait for your fifth person. That's how you, that's how you break the tiebreaker. That's why you have an odd number of members on your board.
I'm, I'm trying to compromise.
I guess comp- I'm a little offended by the word compromise. I think what you're, we're trying to do is do the best thing for the community.
I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, so that's, that, so what we have to decide, again, something we have to decide as a board, is how to do this right. What the superintendent and the staff is telling us is that if they could plan this, it would be easier for them. And what I'm saying is, let's do, let's do the three, but we revisit it. We as a board sit down in January and say to Susan, how'd it work? What's going right?
But do, do you see how that's not compromising with me to say-
That's, yeah.
-to give me some, you know, feedback, say, okay, yeah, you're right. Why don't we do it for that seven weeks? That seems fair enough.
I, I guess, you, you just wanna use the word, you want the compromise. This is, that's what she-
Because, to be honest with you, I came in tonight, and I didn't even plan on voting yes for this. At this point, I'm, I'm willing to vote yes. I understand the need for a, a planning period, and I empathize with that completely, and the teachers have done a fantastic job. But I, I also wanna, if there's any possibility, get the classrooms open, so-
I mean, some schools are going back to school now. Isn't Exeter going back, I heard?
Not till January 4th. And remember, 300 new cases today.
Well, I think, I think the two things aren't necessarily, necessarily mutually exclusive, Gary, unless I'm speaking out of turn, because even if we decided today to vote for all three, if something changed that allowed us to have people in classrooms, which everyone agrees is the best thing, is what will happen. It's not that any teacher wants to say, I prefer remote over, well, there might be some, but the average teacher is not, is, is not, is gonna prefer to be in his or her classroom with his or her students. So, I think, you know, my thought is, we have heard from our educational leader who has told us that this is the path to go. Yes, there are implications for families of every type to make this work. But we've also heard from the president of the union who has said that from a certain perspective, one, people are burning out because of the requirements that we're putting upon them for this, and that this plan with the opportunity to know what's happening going forward would provide some relief for that. In my mind, I think that's important.
Is it, would it be easy in January to, to meet again and have this conversation and be able to switch our February, like, if everything went well, we, we did well, things are looking good, kids are washing their hands, we don't have a lot of flus, the COVID numbers are going down, we were able to open up in September where others weren't. Could we do that in January and just say, we don't have to take the two weeks off after February? As long as nobody's going on cruise ships and, or the staff, I mean, or-
And I, I think one of the things that's a challenge with this whole conversation has been the traveling piece of things, when it's more of an operational-
Yes.
-operationally-driven decision that, if I'm not mistaken, Susan, is, is a major part of the driver for this, this plan. So, so-
How about, so we can get this done. How about I further concede and ask, just ask, we'll vote for all three, and for me, to support this, ask that if we put on the agenda for the first week of January, to get a report on how-
I love that idea. I love that. And I think that's not, I think that's just-
I would say the third week, Gary.
Well, that gives you less time.
I'm just saying, if we're gonna find out how things are going after the holidays.
Oh, because of, yeah, you're right. Good point. Absolutely.
So, I would do that anyways.
Are we prepared to move to the question?
I could look for a motion for this group.
I move that we accept the proposal for the modifications to the 2021 calendar as listed, with the caveat that we address things, meet again in, at the second meeting in January to determine what's gonna happen for February vacation.
I just don't know if it'd be the second meeting in January?
Yeah, 'cause it would be the 20th.
That would be the third week.
Oh.
The 21st to the 20th?
We could just, we can say January 20th, 21st, sorry. Yeah, 'cause if we did the first, the 7th and the 21st.
And that gives you one, two, three, four weeks to get that-
Well, it gets us back in school, and then a couple of days back in session, we're able to.
Right.
That's the other part. This doesn't ente anything.
No, for sure.
That's the hard part.
It's maximized. It's, it's higher likelihood we can stay on campus if, if we've, if we make some strategic-
Whole thing.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, and I love that we had this conversation. We were able to discuss it. I think that if we're remote, we're all just gonna be grateful that our teachers were prepared either way. I mean, if this whole thing gets shut down and we go into lockdown again-
I just worry about these kids who are already behind, and I know it's just gonna get worse and worse. And it just drives me crazy thinking about these kids.
And I, I think the thing-
If there's a chance, that's what I wanted to do.
If there's a chance, Gary, then I'm gonna do that. But I also know that the amount of work that's involved in providing quality learning experience, it is remotely.
You need to, can't hear you.
I, I agree, but there's some kids who are just not gonna get remote. We know that.
And there's, we're looking at, how do we, how do we address the needs of a targeted audience? It's not, it, it's something that Erica and her team has been actively working on, and, and we're not going to ignore that that's, that's something that's of great concern to all of us, which is why, you know, we had long conversations as a faculty about returning in December. And, you know, we all felt, for the, the majority felt, it was really important to get the kids back. So, we're not, I think we're all striving- Towards the same goals and objectives. And that's-
Yeah.
Maximize that it can be here, and that we all have adequate time to plan for, for the, um, the most likely scenarios we're gonna face.
All right, all in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All non-agreement?
No.
All right. Motion passed. All right, so the next thing is, would you like to talk about the Wakefield School District interest? From what I read, it's just an inquiry.
Yes, they wanted you to contemplate whether you would like to provide, merge with them to provide district-level services to their community.
Su- Susan, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you keep going in and out of your, I don't know if you're not, when you move your head, I don't think you're getting into the speakers all the time. Your voice.
Oh, here, honey.
How's this one? Is this one better?
Yes.
We'll try yet another one.
Sorry.
No, no. So, last year, we had a similar request from Rawlingsford. And my understanding from Deb's been in this area for quite a while, that, um, school districts that are tiny oftentimes don't necessarily have the wherewithal to hire full-time staff. It's really difficult to get a superintendent anyways, never mind to try to get a, a half-time one. It's, and so, school districts will look for partners to be able to stay independent as they can, keep their schools locally controlled to the extent that they can, knowing that they're not able to, you know, support full-time central office level leaders, so.
Are we looking for a vote on this?
They would like for you to-
'Cause it's not an action. I would make a motion, oh, it is, I'm sorry, it is.
Yeah, to vote, to see if you would like to-
I, I would make a motion, we send a letter to Wakefield expressing our gratitude for their interests, but at this time, don't think it makes sense for Newmarket, given all we have going on.
I'll second that.
You can't hear Kim now. She's seconded. Anyways, aye.
Aye.
Yeah, absolutely. Exactly. Oh, yeah, it's not on here at all. Please.
Can't hear anybody. Can't, is she gonna be here?
Uh, we're just getting, we're getting a student, uh, report.
Be going now until Thanksgiving break, and then from November 16th to 19th, Student Council is holding a Spirit Week, where each day has a theme, and students will dress up. That's to improve spirit, spirit and morale in the school, hopefully. And then, Newmarket Teen Tutors has started tutoring kids, and we have plenty of tutors eager to help students, so please fill out the survey. It was sent through the monthly newsletter by Mr. Dalton, if you are a student in need who needs help with homework, homework.
All right, so now we do the substitute teacher pay rate comparison.
It's just information. I, I was asked at the last meeting to provide you with this information, so we went out and gathered it and have provided it for you, so you have the data. We're slightly less than the average, not any significant way less, but we are less. So, that's the report.
So, how do we go about increasing that?
Well, I guess, do you think it would help?
Can we?
Do we know-
I think it would help, and I think if we advertise for non-certified subs, just to get us through the year, if there are people who are willing to do that, that are non-certified, I think that possibly could, possibly helps a little bit.
We're advertising now, and we have been since last week, and we haven't gotten one application. Doesn't mean you can't raise the rate, certainly, but I-
The rate, I'll translate.
Amy, the rate change would be, would be a policy change.
Okay. So, we could do it, though, if it was approved?
We'd have to write the policy and amend it, yeah, if we wanted to.
Which takes a few weeks, right?
Mm-hmm.
A few meetings, yeah.
Meetings to first read, second read, that type of thing.
Yeah.
I mean, we might be able to get some substitutes when they, well, let's face, well, UNH coming home, still have to quarantine for two weeks. Usually, when the college kids get home, they can apply. They've applied high school in two years, they can apply. And that's who you usually get.
We're not gonna get that this year. I don't think, because of-
Like I said, I'm, we're advertising for all kinds of different subs, some long-term, some for leaves that we know are coming up in the next month.
Is it just in NH jobs at, at NH?
UNH at jobs.
Yeah. But I assume college kids aren't gonna see that, but.
Do you, well, the ones that wanna be teachers, well-
Oh, okay.
That's usually typically who you get, but we've, we've gotten all types. I mean, my daughter's had her brother's friends substituting, so. I mean, this is definitely something we can look at, a pay rate, but we couldn't do it now because of budget.
Well, I, I, I think you could consider it, 'cause we're not spending money on the subs, 'cause we can't find them.
True.
And, and the, the change in the rate, I mean, it's not like right now we're advertising what our rate is in comparison. Like, there's a rate out there, and they're looking at ours compared to somebody else, and, and not applying because of that.
Well, I think it is actually on the, on our SAU, one of the sites had the rates listed. I'm barely sure.
By 16, perhaps. I, I- Yeah.
Not based on what I, either, you can take whatever action you wish, because I don't think we're gonna, like I said, go over the budget line, because we're not, we, we don't have subs. You know what I'm saying? I don't think it's gonna be a budgetary issue, just simply because of that. You can raise the rates, it doesn't, I don't believe that it's gonna change much right now, because the issue is, people don't wanna be working in schools because they-
Right.
-perceive them, right, wrong, or indifferent. They perceive them as, as a gathering place that's more than ten people, and, um-
Well, why don't we just bring the policy to the next meeting, and we can look at what those are?
We could do that.
So, at least we have the-
One of the things that normal substitutes are retired teachers, that's what we normally typically get.
Yeah.
And they're all afraid to come in.
I mean, we just keep trying, that's all.
Yeah.
We can just keep trying.
We could do that.
I mean, it's worth a shot. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't even see you guys anymore. Completely black.
Oh, yeah, it is.
I don't, what's, I don't know what's going on tonight. It's just not working. I'm so annoyed.
Well, it's, remember, the whole world's remote. It happens all day.
Kim's coming to fix it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, guys.
All right, so, we can bring that next week? The week after?
Yep.
We can have the, look at the policy.
And look at the policy. Look at policy.
An upcoming agenda.
See, okay. So, financial report and other updates?
Yeah, so Jenna put together a report. I thought she provided a really nice summary. She did it in two ways. Because the budget was approved, using a, you know, function code format, she thought it would be important to show it to you that way, so that you, you know, if you wanted to follow with what, you know, you saw when the budget was approved, you could. She added to it- you could. She added to it the adjustments that had been made for the Warren articles, as well as, you know, the, the items that you rolled over from the prior year, so that's your adjustment column. And then, your total budget for, for this year as a result of those decisions appears in the third column, and then, what's been expended to date, the encumbrances to date, and then, what the variance is. So, that's how you kind of read the columns through. So, she gave it to you in that format, and then she gave it to you in the format that, normally, but she, she wanted you to have kind of a crosswalk, so that you could see how, you know, that they tied, they tied together.
Yeah.
And how it would tie in the different formats, so you could see, you know, the eight hundred thousand dollars in adjustments appears in both, you know, and where it appears in the different items, just to help you, you know, to start to make a transition over to the format that she, she would be presenting it to you in the future. And then, she gave you some notice, you know, some little footnotes, too, about significant variances, so that, you know, you'd have answers to questions that she felt, you know, would, would be noticeable, that, you know, at first glance. And so, she's giving you footnotes there. This doesn't, but I, I do want to say, this is not a report on how much money are we going to have at the end of the year, right? This, this, that's not what this report is. It's just, where are we at right now? That you can see lines where we know we're going to have expenses that are not. Can you hear me, Amy, with this one? Okay. You can see where there are areas where there's nothing, no activity so far. There's no PO that's been issued, but we are going to incur the expense, so I just, you know, it's action of costs from now until the end of the year, I guess is the point. It's just where we are financially right now, budget to actual, based on the activity and commitments we've made to date through our purchase orders. So, that's, that's that. There's a couple of other components that aren't included in this and, and will be forthcoming, so a revenue projection. She wanted to give you information on the capital project fund, the bonding fund, and she's still working to reconcile those. But instead of waiting until all of that was done, I said, let's just give them what we have, because this is really what you were looking for, and then we can come back in another week or two, and then go over with you what the other components are, once she has those reconciled. Of course, we're in the middle of renovation upstairs, so it's a little disruptive. So, we'll provide you more information on that. And then, today, I also sent you, it, you know, I didn't realize that the final version of the COVID-related expenditures and encumbrance, the, the updated report was not added, so I sent that to you today. So, we had provided you with, I guess it must have been six weeks or so ago, an accounting of, you know, what the COVID expenses have been so far, knowing that we would have more. At this point, we might still have some COVID expenses, but we think that this captures what we would, what we're going to be, you know, all in for by the end of the year. Again, it can change, you know, based on other circumstances, but, that we're not aware of right now. But this covers all of those additional costs for salaries, benefits, the support staff for monitors, regular education paraprofessionals to cover remote teachers and classes. All of that is included in the upper section, so operating costs, as well as the staffing, salary benefit, and then the revenue offsets Jana presented to you, the information about the Gopher funds, that we were able to collaborate with the town and take advantage of some unused capacity in their Gopher funds with the towns. So, that's sixty-five thousand that we were able to submit through the town, request for the grant, and then, our Esser Cares Act money, that, we've known about that, that's a hundred and eight. We've accounted for all of that. The governor, as I mentioned at the last meeting, announced that, paying all schools with two hundred dollars per student, and for us, that means that we would get an additional two hundred and ten thousand four hundred. We've accounted for that, because as I've shown you, we have almost one point two million dollars in expenses. We're not going to run out of COVID-related expenses we can apply for. And the, and the great part for us is because we have applied for and have expended this, that there's another, I'll call it pothole money that he has, so there's another ten million dollars that's set aside, that if you've spent-
He's the, he the governor?
Those, yeah, he the governor, set aside, so that if you've spent these two amounts, that you can then access some more money. Now, he, so, so, you know, Jana and Melissa are, you know, trying to leverage the different pots, so that we can get back as much money as we can. So, my money's on Jana and the business office, they're really great like that.
Do that.
So, so this, so that's just right now. That, so, revenues, we believe, based on what we know right now, at least we would get the three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to offset that in these grants. And then, then there's, there's expenses that we're not going to incur, because we couldn't execute on our educational plan. And so, salary and benefit costs for custodial administrative coaches, all of that, that we're not going to spend money on this year, comes to about four hu, six hundred and forty thousand. Professional development, as you've heard from everybody, and we keep saying, you can't have teachers go out for conferences, we can't have people come in and do training with us.
Right.
So, and this doesn't even eliminate all of our professional development money in our budget, but at least a hundred thousand safely, we will not be using this year, because we can't. And then, furniture, of course, you all know that we had to remove furniture to make space for social distancing, so we don't have any place to store the furniture we were going to buy if we bought it. So, that money, and this isn't even all of it, but this, so we just said at least sixty thousand we weren't, aren't going to spend, because we don't have any place to put it. And so, and then on transportation, again, you know, we're not running sports.
Right.
We're only doing varsity, we're not doing field trips, so those expenses are, are captured in the transportation line. So, it says estimated revenue offsets, but it should be estimated expense, expenses, if you see that last line there.
Yeah.
Are eight hundred and twenty thousand. So, between the revenue we're getting and these, just these specific expense lines, we would, we will be able to cover the COVID to tap in. Now, again, things can happen, right? Things can happen. This is what we think right now. We're, we're five months into the year of a twelve-month calendar, and so, something can shift, but this is, this is the way we're thinking about it right now. Again, she could get more money on the revenue side. We could have an expense that we don't anticipate, you know, but we think that this pretty accurately represents everything that we are aware of at this time for costs and, and how we would cover the gap for them. So, I'll take any questions on any of that. If it's something that I can't answer, Jana will be back next week, and she can answer if I, if I'm unable to explain something.
One question I had, Susan, was that back in July, we had waived the bidding requirement process through October twenty-ninth. Is that something that would, and we have a list of what, what things were spent under that-
Waiver.
The waiver, is that something that we would need to, that you would think that we would want to consider extending maybe a little bit longer, or do you think we're over the hump of, of that?
I, I don't, for this particular thing, I mean, we have a furniture bid out for some of the furniture we had to buy, you know, we have an assistant superintendent and other positions we added. We have conference room furniture, stuff like that. So, we, we have some that can be brought forward to you.
Okay.
But if, if it starts to get something urgent, I really think that with the approval of the calendar tonight, with the approval of the final MOA, I, you know, with, with, with where we're at, if we can get through tonight, I really feel like we can focus our attention, teachers as well as administration, on providing learning, quality learning experiences for kids. I mean, all we've been talking about is tactical things, how are we going to do this and that?
Yeah.
And I, and I, and I think that if we can get through this, we should be able to somewhat operate normally, but if it gets to be in a pinch, I'll certainly mention it. But I, I think we'll be okay-
Okay.
For now.
All right, I'll move on to the approval of minutes. I'm just going to put them all in one big hop and heap, and say approval for public, non-public meetings from October fifteenth, October twenty-ninth, November fifth. I'm looking for an approval on those public and non-public meetings.
So, I did have some corrections.
Oh.
October fifteenth minutes, it's approval of superintendent evaluation form. Underneath there, it said Elizabeth made a superintendent COVID evaluation forms. So, it was just COVID. Although, it's cropping up everywhere, it's not part of an evaluation form.
Did you see that?
On the second page.
Oh.
She saw which one. So, on the October twenty-ninth minutes, for Kim Mitchell. Instead of Kim Shelton. Like, it's on that same page, said I expressed concern about people coming in, in and out of the, at the front door, not just the door. It's a minor correction, but it makes the others end up confusing.
Do I have a second? With the-
With the amendments.
With the amendments.
To, involving amendments.
And then, there was one more item. Mike and I had a discussion, I actually emailed Sarah, see if she could add that. We had a November fifth meeting. I don't know if Sarah, if you had a chance to? Yeah. So, we had a discussion that's not included, so maybe we could hold off on the November fifth meeting minutes? I don't want to try to summarize that conversation.
So, I am going to amend my motion, say I'm looking for, I am looking for a motion for the October fifteenth minutes, October twenty-ninth, October twenty, October twenty-ninth, public, non-public, with the amendments, and a motion to approve.
And November, we can do November fifth.
I took November fifth out completely.
Well, we could do non-public.
Yeah, then- November fifth, non-public.
Yeah. My second.
I'll second it.
Second, we're, motion to amend.
I made the motion with the amendments. Gary seconded. All right. Okay, so, we tabled the goals for the school board.
Oh, we didn't vote, Elizabeth.
On the minutes.
Everybody in agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're all in agreement. Gary, do you want to read that?
Yes.
I don't have it.
I have it.
Okay.
Prove the manifest dating November twelfth, two thousand twenty, totaling three hundred and nine, one hundred and eighty and seventy cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, she's muted.
Aye.
There she is. All right. Motion passed. We are going to table the approval of school board goals.
Mm-hmm.
Table that. We did the appellate revision, or do we need to do that again?
No, you did that.
We did that. And we talked about that. Now, we are going into a non-public.
Yep, I guess one last thing. Do we, I know, something November, do we know where, is that with the board, or is that with the school?
We have not consideration, because before we can think about that, we have to think about our own athletic program and cultural.
So, that's with the school? Got it. Thank you.
We're working on how we can try to accommodate our own kids and our own, I mean, our own pro kids, and we haven't figured that out yet.
No, I just want to make sure we weren't missing something.
It's on the list.
Non-public, under RSA ninety-one A three, room number, number two, A and C. Second it.
Yeah, second.
Gary's going to second it.
Sorry.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, thank you. Oh, yes, thank you, thank you. Everyone, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.